Thank you, the Court of Honor. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. Beautiful fall evening and we'll do our business and get you home soon. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Mayor Crawford to lead us in prayer.
Battle prayer, please. Almighty God, we are here tonight because of your grace and your mercy and your love. Father, we thank you for the good help that you've given us that we can be here. We ask your blessings upon this time that we have together as we make decisions. And we pray that all of our decisions will bring honor to you and bring success to our county and all of our constituents in the county. Thank you again for watching over us. In Christ's name I pray, amen.
Court of Honor, were you relieved from the pledge?
I plead allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Everybody checked in, now the clerk takes the roll.
Nineteen present, five absent.
Thank you. Before we get started, I would like to take a form of special privilege. At our last meeting, at the end of the meeting, there was lack of decorum in that part and that standard that I hold myself to. And unfortunately, I didn't live up to that standard. And as quickly as I could, Dan Street and I met and I apologized to him for possibly embarrassing him. Certainly didn't mean to do that, but again, I didn't follow the form that I asked of you. And so Dan's coming in now with his shirt on. Looked at Dan, I bet, and we've been friends for a long time. And hopefully he has forgiven me for that. And I feel like I should ask the forgiveness of the commission for my lack of decorum and we'll move on. It's important to me, quite honestly, in my forty years of public service, that I think that's the first time that may have ever happened. There might have been one time on the House floor in Nashville that I'll tell you about if you ask. But again, I apologize to the commission for the way that last meeting ended. We'll move on.
You forgot one right here.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. You had to take him and the black friend right there.
Is that right there?
Yeah.
Well, but we didn't do that out here. And I thought I was... I knew I was going to butcher it, I didn't know who was going to get to it.
I've been so bad with it since you've been here.
But I also extend a retroactive apology to you, Patricia. Well, thank you for letting me do that. Again, this is my thirteenth year of conducting these meetings and it's a privilege for me to do so. And I appreciate that privilege and I'll try to live up to the standards that you all have tried to live. Next up is guest, a paper proclamations, recognition, or presentations. And it's my pleasure to welcome to the podium, Mr. Ed Bush. Mr. Bush, while he's walking up here, I'll tell you that I think if we elected a mayor of Blountville, it might be Ed because he is ever-present here and certainly provides tremendous services to Sullivan County. We're happy to have you here, Ed. The floor is yours.
Good evening. I thought I would meet with you guys. Again, I haven't been to this group for probably three or four years. I thought I'd share a few things. One of the exciting things I have to share is this monograph of the Old Deer Inn and Museum. And this was done by Rebecca Prophet at the Reese Museum. Rebecca actually spent six... volunteered with us for over a year, but also got her master's degree on Blountville, the Old Deer Inn, Ms. Caldwell. And did an excellent job in the paper. And we had a showing for about six months at the Reese Museum. And it really, really was impressive what she did. Borrowed some things from us, things from their collections and their archives, and really did well for the county and for the Deer Inn. But I'm giving every... We got someone basically donated some money. We got about a hundred copies, we're gonna try and sell some. But I thought it would be good for those that are not aware of the inn, its impact, and what happened over the last two-hundred-and-thirty years, it'd be a good education for you. Again, Blountville, they called it Bloodsville back in eighteen-twenty, was here when the boat... Kingsport was the boatyard and Bristol was Sapling Grove and Kings Meadow. Significant amount of history, I won't go into it. William Dearie had fifty-three teams of horses, eight stage coaches, was one of the richestest men in the state of Tennessee when he passed. His estate was in litigation for thirty-five years. Anyway, so read through this. When you're done with it, share it with somebody. If you don't want to read it, give it back because we'll sell it. I also did just a bibliography and just some pictures of activities at the inn. The bibliography is... And these are all online. The Old Deer Inn and Museum and Ethnographic Case Study, that's Rebecca Prophet's paper. We had, I don't know how many people were aware of Ralph Blizzard, who was a long, old-time longbow fiddler from Blountville, considered one of the best in the nineteenth and in last century of longbow fiddlers. I'll divert to the poster behind it. You'll see this, and I shared this because I get so excited every time I see it. It's Tennessee Musicians. We've got Elvis, Tina Turner, Rita Franklin, Dolly, Tennessee Ernie, Earl Scruggs, lots of fat... And our Ralph Blizzard is in the top middle. The man was that good of a long-time fiddler. We have, and through the mayor, allowed us to develop a Ralph Blizzard Museum in Anderson Townhouse. And at some point, hopefully you guys will be able to see this, but I thought I would share this. A lot of people don't know that this man was considered one of the best in the world. And he's from Blountville. Actually, he had a... He put the fiddle underneath the bed when he got back in nineteen-fifty-five from World War II. Didn't get it out till he retired from Eastman, practiced six, eight hours a day for two years, and became basically one of the world's best. So I thought I'd share that. Anyway, then we have, the most important thing is the music, that's Ralph Blizzard's legacy. We... Emily Dixon did her, did her masters on Ralph. Talked to family members, band members, local people, it's pretty good. The other thing that's exciting that was started, we did to start it, was JAM, Junior Appalachian Musicians. And there are fifty-two groups throughout the region, three in Sullivan County, two in Johnson City. And JAM, through Mark Blizzard, Ralph's son, basically got it going, so it was a program at Sullivan Middle School. And what they do, they provide songbooks and they provide training instruments for a minor fee, like ten, twelve dollars an hour. So we had four banjo players, four mandolin, and four guitars. Students show up and basically, it's to bring, continue the old-time music tradition. And so I... That's really exciting for us. I found a really neat article, Battle of Blountville, Not Just a Four-Hour Rump. You know, we get a little bit of the Battle of Blountville, a little article. Then I found Internal Descent, East Tennessee Civil War, specifically about some, you know, they call Blountville the Little Confederacy, for those that didn't know it, just because of its holdings. There's an excellent article on stage wagons and coaches, it's really phenomenal, that goes back to Dearie's time with his wagons and coaches and so forth. And there's another one on Smithsonian, Slavery Trailers, where a million slaves were forced march from Norfolk to Richmond, through Abingdon, down through, well, down through Blountville, basically, on the V-South. So I thought I'd share those, if you're really interested in some of the history of the region, just look at those. For those that were not aware, in two thousand two, two thousand three, Dennis Hauser and I don't know if Rand Fox was involved, but Dave, John Steele, and so forth, got money to buy the Deer Inn and the Rutledge House from the family. And so Sullivan County Historical Preservation Association donated that back to the county. And the county pays for lights, heat, and security. And we get Cindy, and maintenance gets a stipend of ten thousand dollars a year for additional maintenance. Now there are eleven historic buildings, some of them going back to seventeen-fifty. So ten thousand dollars doesn't go very far to repair those. But I would share, if you were not aware, that there are more, according to the state archaeologist, Alan Longmire, there are more pre-Civil War and pre-eighteen-hundred structures in this concentrated area than anywhere else in the state of Tennessee. And I did not know that. One of the other things we did was, I don't know, we gave you, everybody, a copy of, we call it the Quarters. And we have, you know, the Dennis Hauser, we have the park at Deer Inn. Gary Mays was kind enough to work a quick grant, got us twenty thousand dollars, and worked with the Health Department to really develop a park for Blountville. It's used quite a bit, we don't have quite enough equipment, but that's the game, I guess. It's mostly for small kids, children anywhere between eight and twelve really don't have anything to play on, but we're trying to figure out how to go forward with that. But I just wanted to meet with you and let you know some of the things we've been working on. And don't forget, if you haven't, or we're not aware, we're having the Second Festival of Trees this year. And it's gonna be three weekends in December, and it's absolutely gonna be phenomenal. We have over forty trees this year. And businesses, individuals, scouts, churches, so forth. It's really, really nice. And then the Appalachian Express, I also sing the Appalachian Express, we're gonna sing at the Baptist Church Friday the eighth. So I don't remember how many people from this group may have attended last year, I think it was the light. But if you guys have time, and I know December's a busy time, but please come by because we sound pretty good, so. That's all really I have, I just wanted to thank you. To read this monograph, I think you'll be, you'll be surprised and pleased with the history of this region, so. Thank you.
Ed, thank you. Does any member have a question? I can personally recommend that December eighth Appalachian Express. And I'm Larry Crawford, is it still a member?
He is.
You can let him stay in.
Yeah, he carries my bucket for notes.
Well, I heard he had the lipsync, but other than that, thank you, Ed. Thank you for being here.
If I could, could I, I would like to ask Commissioner Horn to meet me at the podium.
Commissioner Horn had requested that recognize outstanding accomplishment and therefore I would like to read a proclamation. I mean, these fine young people, a proclamation for West Ridge High School Volleyball Team. Whereas the West Ridge High School Volleyball Team has done great work and achieved numerous achievements this season, winning awards as a team and among individual team members. And whereas West Ridge High School Volleyball Team's accomplishments to date this season include, big list. State Line Slam Gold Bracket Champ, Big East Conference Regular Season Champ, District One Triple-A Tournament Champ, Region One Triple-A Tournament Champ, second time in three years. Sectional Winners, second time in three years. State Tournament Elite Eight, second time in three years. Whereas accomplishments by individual team members of the West Ridge High School Volleyball Team, to date this season includes Faith Wilson, Big East Conference All-Academic Team, Big East Conference Center of the Year, District One Triple-A All-Tournament Team, Region One Triple-A All-Regional Team, achieved both one thousand and two thousand career assist milestone in the same season. Recorded a school record fifty-seven assists in the sectional game against Hardin Valley. Carrie Wilson, Big East Conference All-Academic Team, Big East Conference First Team, District One Triple-A Tournament MVP, Region One Triple-A All-Region Team, and achieved one thousand career digs. Recorded a school record forty-six digs in the sectional game against Hardin Valley. Riley Haney, Big East Conference All-Academic Team, Big East Conference Hitter of the Year, District One Triple-A All-Tournament Team, Region One Triple-A All-Region Team, and achieved one thousand career kills. Casey Wampler, Big East Conference All-Academic Team, Big East Conference Second Team, District One Triple-A All-Tournament Team, Region One Triple-A Regional Tournament MVP, and recorded a school record of twenty kills in the sectional game against Hardin Valley. Madison Haney, Big East Conference Team, Second Team. Laney Jordan, Big East Conference All-Academic Team, Big East Conference Honorable Mention. Molly Cudshaw, Big East Conference Honorable Mention. Got a second page, there's a lot of achievement here. Whereas Sullivan County Commissioner Daniel Horn has called for a proclamation in celebration of West Ridge High School Volleyball Team and all its team members. Therefore, now be it resolved that I, reconnable Mayor of Sullivan County, Tennessee, along with Commissioner Daniel Horn and his fellow members of the Sullivan County Commission, do hereby proclaim November sixteenth as West Ridge High School Volleyball Team Recognition Day to celebrate the outstanding performance of the team and its members, and urge all citizens to join in this celebration. I will now ask Commissioner Horn to introduce the team members and the coaches, and we're joined by Commissioner Vanover and Commissioner Mead.
Thank you, Mayor. These girls have had an outstanding season, career, and I've known several of them since they were wee bitches. They're outstanding student athletes. And I encourage each of you all to get to know these folks. I grew up here like you all did and had never been to one of these. And so my eyes were open when I started, and I encourage you all to familiarize yourselves with this up here and be involved. It's fun, it's educational, it's frustrating, stressful, all of it, it's got it all. But get involved and congratulations to your own awesome achievements. I know we couldn't have everybody here tonight, I know there's a lot of sickness going around right now, but I'll read everybody's name off, and if you're here, just kind of let us know who you are. Number one, Autumn McLean. Number two, Madison Haney. Number three, Laney Jordan. Number four, Faith Wilson. Number five, Riley Haney. Number six, Casey Wampler. Number seven, Carrie Wilson. Number eight, Angelina Kearney. Number nine, Aubrey Killen. Number ten, Ally Riley. Number eleven, Maggie DeBriggi. Number twelve, Isabel Bricky. Thirteen and fourteen, Molly Cudshaw. And number fifteen, Remy Smith. And then coaches, Logan Kemp, head coach, and also Emily Conken and Chris Benton. So congratulations to you all, I know your parents are very proud, we're all proud of you as well. Good job.
Thank you to the young ladies and all the parents who supported him and took him to practice and picked him up to practice and had late dinners and all, because that all goes with him. Next out on our agenda, appointments, we have none this evening. So up next is the approval of the commission minutes from previous meetings, those been read on the desk, adopted by Commissioner Crawford, second by Commissioner Gardner. Any additions, corrections, or discussions? Seeing none, the board over, catch a vote. A motion to approve the minutes. Everyone voting? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam clerk, take the vote.
Twenty-one is three, answer.
I'm assuming that sir, if you're in the minutes, are approved, that's published. Next up, the approval of noted republics. The clerk will read the list of noted republic applicants. And as always, if you have an objection to someone on the list or reason to defer that, at the end of the list, you would actually recognize and give so. Madam clerk, would you read the list?
Margie J. Adams, Tyler Wesley Arnold, Stephanie Arnold, Allison Elaine Bowling, Allison Armreister Brogan, Brandon Byington, Linda Hicks Campbell, Cecilia E. Carrier, Jonathan David Carter, Joy M. Chapman, Patricia Janet Collins, Amy Collins, Deanna K. Corley, Abigail T. Cross, Macy J. Darnell, Michael C. Davis, Carolyn S. Farrell, Amanda Shay Floyd, Mavis Michelle Brayley, Melissa Gatten, Elgin D. Gauntz, Leslie Graves, Cynthia S. Kessler, Michael Shane Legg, Pamela D. Lowey, April L. Matthews, Jill V. McCollum. April L. Matthews, Jill V. McKennie, Billy Ray Me, Brianna Miller, Christopher Mark Nida, Jessica Renee O'Neil, Teresa M. Hollis, Angela Petrusi, Margaret R. Ryans, F. Michael Sexton, Robin Polly Sousa, A. Lee Talbot, Katina Thompson, Michael S. Tucker, Isaac Alexis Virgin.
You've heard the list, is there any objection to any name on this? Seeing none, we'll rate a vote on the approval of noted republics asked identified. Board's open, cast a vote. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, take a vote.
Twenty-one yes, three no.
I perceive necessary majority, this is approved, that's read. Next up, public comment, Commissioner. Thank you, Attorney. We have one person sent up for public comment and so Mr. Rodney Page, we'll look at you in a little bit. Rodney, of course you know the drill, name address, three minutes.
I love your shirts tonight, it's nice. My name is Rodney Page, 11/25, y'all, I'm still moving, let me see. Came here tonight, actually you guys addressed a lot of what I came here tonight with this handout right here. Looks like you've put a lot of work into this and I mean honestly, I like what I see, a lot of this. You know, last week and last month, we heard about $8 million going into a $17 million bond that was going to go into this project and you're reading the newspaper, it's hard to figure out how much of that's going to be going into the building versus how much of it's going into the fields. But the more I look at this, the less complaints I have about it really. I know we still have to pay for it and there are some questions that I still have regarding it and I'll kind of run through those. I know we're looking at $8 million, unfortunately this doesn't price out like each component of it. How much of that is going into the building and the offices? And how much of that's going into what I consider community enrichment stuff, which is your baseball fields and your walking paths and those sort of things? I think that'd be good information to kind of have. How much money's been spent on the project already? I know in 2020, we passed a state grant resolution for $950,000 to go into the courthouse here. But I don't know if any of that money went into this or not in the early stages. I'm curious, I was kind of curious about that. You know, if it hasn't, then is that money that could go into it and would that require you to work on your house part? The other question I kind of had too, when I see about baseball fields, concession stands, the walking path, what is our projections for maintenance on this? Like, I know the Little League fields now, a lot of the upkeep seems to fall on the league and them raising money for that, and the water lines were a problem. We used to mow it whenever we were parents and stuff, we would mow the fields themselves and I do think the county mows the outsides. But how much of this, since we're going to put all this effort into this money into it, how much of this is going to be maintained by the county and this is that projected cost as well? Because if we're going to do it, it's worth keeping it nice, otherwise it's a waste of money too. I did see in the newspaper it mentioned a 300-person conference room. That was a hard one for me to stomach a little bit because I mean, I remember 2015 when that was a selling point on the Ag Center and then we turned around and gave the Ag Center away for a dollar five years later. So I don't know, you know, do we need to do stuff like that? But again, I like what I'm seeing here. I also, I guess I also had a little bit of a concern, I'm listening to the work sessions from the school board meeting recently, this is completely different subject, that there was a cash flow concern and you know, I know the private act was passed and everybody here knows I don't love that, but it was passed and it was for transparency. Yet it feels like that the avenues that it set up to go through for issues like what's on your last resolution today, a lot of this got bypassed somehow and the concerns didn't come up through the finance director and it didn't come up through the financial management committee, they came from a county commissioner in the middle of a work session at the school board meeting. And somewhere we need to get that communication improved between the finance department, the school, the community. And we feel it's all about transparency, let's be transparent about it, not play games of gotcha or whatever we're doing here. And then I guess, again, you guys stole a lot of my thunder with this thing. I honestly, I like, I like community enrichment projects, I like stuff that kids can do. I mean, I helped coach a baseball team over in the east area. I love seeing the idea that you're wanting to invest in our community. I just also want you to have a plan on how to take care of that long-term and make it be something that continues to provide that enrichment and not just kind of want to fling and then try to backpedal, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page, appreciate it. Anybody else in the audience would like to address the commission, does anyone have an option to sign up? Seeing none, our public comment section is closed. And we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. And as of our work session on the Thursday evening, we did not have anything put on the table. And I guess that's a good thing. Next up, resolution agenda. First on that, under old business. Item number two, sponsored by Commissioner April and Commissioner Crosswhite. Commissioner April could not be here tonight, so I'll recognize Ms. Crosswhite as the sponsor of the resolution. George, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we discussed this in the last week, so any more questions? I hope you all received this, what we're all talking about. This is our plan, it's going to be one, it's going to lead work for the community. And you also have a list of our master plan. Now, we don't have money yet, but we've gotten this far, so I hope everybody will support this because this is for our community and it's going to be wonderful. We've got everything from walking trails to three-bike fields, pickleball court that may just happen. Going to leave some of our county offices up there, we're going to leave some records, leave some records. So I hope they will know and is supporting this because this community needs it. Any questions?
Ms. Crosswhite moves as adoption of item number two, seconded by Commissioner April and others. Commissioner Bean, you're recognized for a question or comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say I'm really grateful for this. This is allowing us to communicate with the community much better than a month ago and there are still a lot of questions and, but I plan to make sure that we, and I know that everyone else on here makes sure that we spend it wisely, what comes through here. But a big question I had just now was where will the projected revenue funds save from like concession stand and things like that down the road? Where will that go to within our county budget?
You'd have to ask Mr. Bailey, I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Bailey, recognize.
Any collections that are concessions or whatever really profits are made could go into the County General Fund and that could be pledged and appropriated for this commission as to whatever purposes has to be spent for the maintenance or whatever.
Okay, I have no better questions, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Locke, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mayor. Question for Larry, I guess, or maybe you. The monies that's going to be appropriate for this project, is that going to include all the departments that are going to be moving over there? EMAs, EMA, trustees office?
I would expect it would be shared with them as the budget committee and so forth allocate it. As they go over there and they have needs, it would be expected that it becomes, yes.
So if it ain't me and it will fulfill anything that those department heads be, right?
For that building is concerned, in honor of everyone that's worked under a city administrative partner in the county will be located in that area that's probably EMA, EMS, even the health department will have a facility there and they will have what's necessary to help and they're proper.
Because I know if EMA goes over there, the EOC will be there. We had an LEPC meeting there last week and if we're going to move there, we don't need to cut any corners and do an EOC the right way, the way it should be. With the population that we are and the size of this county, we've been very fortunate to get by with what we've had that's in place right now.
You're right, because it's really cranked and off top of Mr. Bean and we've looked at various areas that will outfit that EOC. Unfortunately, with donation of a lot of furniture from our friends at the community, we should be able to outfit that without a huge cost. If you've been to the office now, you've seen.
And they are. That's good.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Horn, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Where will the maintenance, it may have already been asked and answered, but where will the maintenance of that area, those outside areas fall? Who's responsibility will that be with the track and the fields and would it be county maintenance?
You mean the grounds and? Yes, the community, Mr. Page said the community has maintained the old burning wet fields and actually the people who use the football field do some of the mowing. The county would mow the grounds. But I would expect that the people supporting the Little League programs and the baseball programs would want to maintain those fields. And of course, they've got to be put in good shape before we give them to them and they got to special grade, good infills with the latest materials.
Will they be, and I would imagine we can do that.
Any other questions for the sponsor? If not, the sponsor renews their motion for adoption on the second reading. And when the board opens, please cast your vote on item number two. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, take a vote.
Eighteen yes, three no, three no.
I perceive necessary majority, item number two is adopted. Moving on, under old business. Commissioner Iverson, you're recognized on item number.
Mayor, after discussions in yesterday's budget committee meeting, I know there's going to be one in two weeks, I'd like to push this to next month's meeting so we can discuss it.
Without objection, we will call this the first item on the next month calendar. Next, we leave to our old business. The fourth down is new business and that would be item number four. And Commissioner Vanover, you're recognized on item number four, since I figure your own.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number four is one you may recognize, it's been amended and approved for two or three months now, but that was after the request of County Attorney Street to make sure the county was protected in these contracts and awarded was the way the county wants it. So he's renewed it, he's endorsed it. It's also been through the administrative committee, it's been through the executive committee with positive recommendation. It's a resolution to authorize Sullivan County Mayor and County Attorney to sign a contract with Tennessee Department of Transportation for traffic signal upgrades and other upgrades at the intersection of Highway 93 and Bloomingdale Road. And as I said, it's been through all the committees, it's been through County Attorney Street. I'd like to ask for waiver rules on this for immediate adoption.
Commissioner Vanover moves to waive the rule for immediate introduction and adoption of item number four. And the board's open for any question. Seeing none, requires 16 votes for passage of. When the board opens, please cast a vote on item number four. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, take a vote.
Twenty-one yes, three no.
I perceive necessary majority, item number four is adopted. Next up, item number five, Commissioner Iverson, you're recognized on item number five.
Yes, Mayor, just renewing this motion that was spoken about at the work session and presented to us by TCSA at the Chattanooga meeting. And it just allows the county commissions, and if it does in fact do this, it'll be the local school would also be under the TCRS retirement system. And actually with all of the conversation about it, I'm not sure, one of the co-sponsors on the back is Gary Stidham, it wasn't listed on my form here, but Gary Stidham is a co-sponsor. And actually, I guess I'd like to put this on waiver rules and answer any questions that have.
You've heard the explanation, anybody have any questions for the sponsor? Seeing none, we'll rate a vote, we'll vote, cast a vote. On item number five, requires 16 votes for passage. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, take a vote.
Twenty yes, one no, three no.
I perceive necessary majority, item number five is adopted. Item number six, Commissioner Glover, recognize you on item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution is to appropriate up to $100,000 to fund a property tax related program for approximately 4,000 property taxpayers in Sullivan County for the 23, 24 tax years. Moved as eligible by the state and as provided by Tennessee Code. The rest of Tennessee, what we're conducting the ratio study for the tax year, 23 ratios between current housing market values and Sullivan County's asset values are expected to reflect a range of 35% within these state values. And I'm going to, going down where is, whereas this Sullivan County Board of Commissioners recognizes the need to provide financial assistance with vouchers to be applied as credit to tax payment of $75 to our qualifying payers of property taxes as allowed in Tennessee Code. Number one, elderly over age 65 with an income limit of $33,460 for the household. Or, number two, disabled persons disqualified by the Social Security Administration with an income limit of $33,460 for a household. Or, number three, 100% disabled victims or surviving spouses, they're paid by the victims administration. Angela came in and asked, answered the questions that was asked her at the workshop there last week. We've got about 3,900 and some people are down the county in detail and I think it's a really good program for them. Appreciate, if there's any questions that have on this, I don't think Angela's here tonight. Is she back there? If there's any questions, I might have to answer them, or if I can, I'll just answer them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Glover moves for immediate introduction and adoption of item number seven. And if I may, read into the record, this co-sponsored by Commissioner Crosswhite, King, Slako, Ward, Hunter, Hunterlock, April, Hayes, Crawford, Cross, Pierce, Iverson, Vanover, Harvey, Calton, Stidham, Bean, and Joe Carr. Mr. Calton, you're recognized.
He has. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Okay, I didn't find this one.
You got real loud on your, you got a speaker on that. You got real loud on your, uh, you got the speaker on, I couldn't hear.
I just have a question as a co-sponsor, my boy, agree with this. But on the three sections that you have, just out of curiosity, what is the percentage you have on each of those three? Do you know?
Angela gave that to me the other day. She could probably answer that better for you than I can. I think last year, the veterans was the ones that needed the most assistance and the most help as far as the dollar figure goes. And they were receiving quite a bit more money from the state than what we've got in here. I think they're getting quite a bit more money for their assistance. If, if you wish for her to give an answer on that, I'd ask her to come up. I think the percentage wise, the probably the veterans need the most help.
Okay, so.
She come here.
Donna, would you, would you want to answer that?
Uh, I don't know what her numbers are this year when we start talking about if that's all I have.
You're recognized. As such, our properties?
Thank you. I know the veterans have been getting like a thousand fifty dollars and now it's down to seven hundred. And the veteran, I mean, the elderly and spouses was about a fifty, sixty dollar difference this year.
Is that actually a question?
Thank you.
I don't know what the percentage is.
Thank you.
It's probably gonna be hard for us to determine this year until the tax year's over. But from what she was saying there, the answer she gave was last year and it was just percentage. Thank you, Donna. Appreciate it. Uh, Commissioner Crosswhite, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I am a co-sponsor on this, but I will be abstaining to vote because I am the proud wife of a hundred percent disabled veteran. And we need to help our veterans and these, these other people that are listed on here too. So I said I will be abstaining, but I'm proud, I'm proud, thank you for cause, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions, or comments? Commissioner Jones has to be a, a co-sponsor on this, and I would like Mr. Jones's name to, to read as a co-sponsor on this. And also, Mr. Mr. Horn also, Dave Moore is a co-sponsor also, so, uh. Without objection, we'll have those names as co-sponsors. Any other questions? Joe? There you go.
Yeah, I just wanted to be added as a co-sponsor as well.
Without objection, we'll have Mr. McMurphy as a co-sponsor of. Mr. Glover, you want all, all those voting in the affirmative to be your co-sponsor?
Yes, sir.
Without objection, all those voting in the affirmative will be shown as co-sponsors on item number six. Any further questions? Seeing none, now you're ready to vote. When the board opens, please cast your vote on item number six. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam clerk take vote.
Twenty yes, one absent, three absent.
Have received necessary majority, item number six is adopted. Next up, item number seven, Commissioner Iverson, you're recognized on item number seven.
Mr. Mayor, uh, we're withdrawing item number seven, it's not needed. So item number eight was one of the four, and I'll talk about that in the next one. So item number seven withdrawn with.
Okay.
Yeah, number eight's in the next place.
Next, Kelly. Next up, item number eight. Commissioner Iverson, you're up again.
Okay, sir, um, the one before was basically dropping the lease. We were told that we really don't need that. There is an agreement between the City of Kingsport and solid waste of Sullivan County. And we're just looking to relocate an area, get the recycling bins to a place that's much better, closer to the foreland. Want to serve the community better. Uh, this is a, up to $20,000 to do fencing and lighting. We think it's gonna be less. It's sixteen thousand nine hundred was the first bid, but he's gonna have to get three bids, so we know that will be the highest. And then there was to put one light there, but that's all, um, in the code that has to happen. So there is an agreement between the two entities, and they feel very comfortable and confident that that's not gonna be a factor. So I renew my motion, sir, and it is looking for waiver rules.
And, uh, Iverson moves for immediate adoption and introduction and adoption of item number eight. Thank you, uh, Ms. Calton. Turn me on. I have people threatening to turn on me. I talk, but that's first that's happened. Uh, same about Commissioner Calton, uh, any discussion we have?
Are we on item eight or nine?
Eight. Eight. Commissioner, uh, well, we have seven, this is eight. You okay, you okay now?
I wanted to ask at you, I thought we were gonna amend this to show where the money was coming from.
Oh, you're exactly right, and I apologize. It is from the general fund. Thank you very much for telling me that. I meant to amend it to that.
The sponsor wishes to add amendment number one to identify that the revenue for funding of this project will come from the general fund. Thank you, Doc. Any, any other questions? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. When the board opens, please cast your vote on item number eight. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam clerk take vote.
Twenty one yes, three absent.
Have received necessary majority, item number eight is adopted. Next up, item number nine, Commissioner Crosswhite. You're recognized on item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution to authorize the transfer of funds from the General Purpose School Fund into the Federal Projects Fund. I apologize amendments. But anyway, uh, federal projects grants operate on reimbursement, reimbursement basic, and funds are required from the State of Tennessee by the Sullivan County Finance Department for expenditures on lease by bio-liquid basis. A federal projects fund operates cash with a deficit at various times throughout the year. And due to the turnaround time needed for reimbursements from the State of Tennessee, and the governor, the government auditing standards consider a cash sufficiency as any time plan to be sufficient in internal control. So what it boils down to, this is just a cash flow. We're gonna live it from the general fund, school general fund to the federal fund, and it'll be one million, eight hundred thousand. And I want this on waiver rules. And like I said, it's just moving from one, one, uh, plan to the other.
Mr. Crosswhite moves for immediate introduction and adoption of item number nine, sectioned by Commissioner Vanover. Any questions? Discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote on item number nine, require sixteen votes for passage. The board opens, cast your vote on item number nine. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam clerk take vote.
Twenty one yes, three absent.
Have received necessary majority, item number nine is adopted. Next up, Commissioner Glover on item number ten. I'm, I'm moving faster than I can.
Before you cut my mic, I'm gonna name it. Mr. King, they've got the name.
Oh, did, did, okay. I'll, I'll, if we've got a typo there, we can correct that, and I'll recognize Mr. King on item number ten. Glad you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, resolution to adopt the two thousand twenty-four Sullivan County Highway Department Road Atlas. We do this every year. This is just a list of all the roads that are in Sullivan County. And any new roads that we put in, uh, goes into this atlas. And any that we take out, uh, you know, goes out of the atlas. But it's, uh, something where if somebody needs to look up a road, we've got an atlas that they can look at and, um, find the roads in their area or anywhere in Sullivan County. So, uh, we need to adopt this, it's, you know, something that we do every year, so we need to adopt this.
You want to waiver rule on this one?
You want to? Waiver all the rules, yes.
Okay, Commissioner King moves for waiver rule for immediate introduction and adoption by item number ten, sectioned by Commissioner Glover, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And there is a list of the roads, the new roads on the second page here.
Okay.
If anybody wants to look, uh, the deletions and also the ones that have been added.
John, you're recognized.
We have a resolution coming up that came from the planning and zoning of deleting a section of county road at owner's request. Instead of having to redo this part, we wait until next month. And have it corrected with that correction on there.
Commissioner?
It's co-res, item number?
Right, right. I really don't have a problem with this. If yours passed, can we just have to not let them update it?
I mean, however you want to do it.
I think it's first read.
Sam, you're right.
Correction, though, you're doing, so.
You could amend this list.
Let's just do that.
And, and add to the deletions of the tar of it.
Right.
Got it?
Well, we can amend it when his, um, resolution is brought forward, we can, then we can amend it.
We do have a resolution here to drop that, so we can amend and amend this adding. If you identify the road again, co?
Co-res.
If that's amended, we can check this out, yeah.
Right.
And we'll just.
If his resolution passes, we'll just amend it and be added. Okay.
You've heard the explanation. Any, any further questions for the sponsor?
I've got on that second page, a few little additions. There's one that's in mind, but I haven't told you this kind of, if that information. Indeed. Grove.
Well, every commissioner probably has something in his district that, uh, doesn't, whatever. So good, good time to consider that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sponsor renews his motion. Any, any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, the board opens, cast your vote on item number ten, amended. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam clerk take vote.
Twenty yes, one no, three absent.
Have received necessary majority, item number ten is adopted. That went.
I'm sorry, that just changed.
That just changed?
Someone just changed their vote.
This is Eric's on.
You had to turn it up.
I have to make sure the recording is correct.
Of course, ma'am. He's pretty quick there. I believe he got on the right route.
Twenty one yes, three absent.
That's, uh, have him received the necessary majority, including, now, Mr. Locke's vote, uh, is adopted.
John wants to change his vote. I was, uh, I was, uh, in pain. What, what trouble he's had so far? We need to go. We ain't going there.
Let us go, go ahead.
We ain't going there, Dwight, I don't know.
Uh, okay. I got the term. Next up, item number eleven. With John. Item number eleven, you're recognized.
Yes, this is a, within that subdivision on Gammont Road, there was a, a road put in by the developer. I don't know why he felt like they had to have through the middle of the lots, an access road. But it, it ends on this property and this, the, the Fries family wants to close that piece of road. It's pretty narrow. But they want, it, it is on the map, but it, they, uh, they want to close the, the piece of this property. And the Jason owners all have access to Gammont Road, and so there's no opposition. And we did ask for, I think, the waiver rules on this, yes. That came from planning and zoning. No, it's just waiver rules.
Commissioner John moves to waive the rule for immediate introduction and adoption by number eleven, sectioned by Commissioners Ward and Calton. Any discussion, any questions for the sponsor? Mr. King, you're a little recognized.
I've got a question, Sam. That road goes through all those lots, right?
Right.
And at some point in time, they're gonna do this to every one of those lots?
They could, but that would have to be up to the property owner, not the county commission. They'd have to come and request it.
Okay, any, any further questions for the sponsor? Seeing none, now you're ready to vote. The board opens, cast your vote on item number nine. Require sixteen votes for passage. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam clerk take vote.
Twenty one yes, three absent.
Have received necessary majority, item number eleven is adopted. Next up, item number twelve. Sponsor by Commissioner Gardner. Commissioner Gardner, you're, you're recognized on item. John, you're gonna jump to your microphone? And you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twelve comes to the commission with a favorable recommendation from the budget committee. It's to sell delinquent tax property in the sixteenth civil district. Uh, during the ten-day advertisement period, uh, we received a bid for $100, and the current amount owed against the property is $505.13. And, uh, there's, without no objection, I move immediate introduction on waivers of rules on item number twelve.
Commissioner Martin moves immediate introduction and adoption of item number twelve. Uh, sectioned by Commissioner King. Any, uh, questions for the sponsor? Discussion? Seeing none, item number, the board opens, hopefully cast your vote on item number ten. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam clerk take vote.
Twenty one yes, three absent.
Have received necessary majority, item number twelve is adopted. Next up, Commissioner Glover, you're recognized on item number thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution is to assist with funding to implement emergency supply of water to current Sullivan County farmers of livestock with the low health of livestock, drought, camp, drought conditions, response, and recovery identified by U.S. Department of Agriculture and Natural Association and African Administration informed by their National Integrated Drought Information System and that are not eligible for assistance through federal programs. Governor, for all this, I've been happy to. Basically, what we're doing is, um, is working with our local fire departments to provide water for these farmers that have, uh, dry ponds that's dried up due to lack of rain. If we look at the second page, I would like to see the federal reserve and streamlined procedure in place to process each request from livestock farm landowners for emergency water relief in response to Sullivan County's current drought conditions. And the federal resolve that Sullivan County nor any Sullivan County Public Fire Department assume any responsibility for damages that might be incurred upon water delivery made by authorized request from eligible farm landowners as determined by approved application. When I say application, those applications are in Mr. Bean's office. And, uh, that will be the farmers we'll be getting in touch with, working with to get this, uh, set up. The federal resolve, any preparation not exceeded in this program to assist farmers with emergency supply of water for livestock. supply of water for livestock during this drought period, response will be returned to the county general fund immediately upon deadline date of application at 12:00 p.m. December 31st, 2023. The amount of dollar figure we've got set aside now is $25,000. And I'd love to have extra co-sponsors along here. Anyone who wants to be a co-sponsor? If everybody wants to affirm this, thank you. We did something similar to this back in, I think, two thousand seven or something like that. Commissioner King is a sponsor and Commissioner Butler King is co-sponsor. And it's, it's pretty dry and our farmers are having a tough time right now and they just rely on the hood and also this is for people has all different types of livestock for goats, anything that has to do with that. I know Commissioner Vanover's district, he's had a lot of calls and acquisitions about this. My, Mr. King's district, we also have, and I think Commissioner Hayes also has, and some fires burning today, we were told up in the 421 area, so it's, it's dry. And hopefully, the rain, it will be Friday, and it was supposed to get some next week, but it's going to take, it's going to take a couple, two, three, it just rained, it's back where we need it. So, they can get this done on waiver of rules if we can to help with getting them some assistance right away if we can. Any questions?
Commissioner Glover moves immediate introduction and adoption by item thirteen. Sponsored by the co-sponsor by Mr. King, Commissioner Vanover, and sponsored request of all those voting, any affirmative be added, this sponsor. Commissioner King, you're recognized. Questions and discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. Back in two thousand seven, we had a similar situation. A lot of people, ponds dried up and they needed water. And we met with the fire departments and got a, and also our county government, and so the fire departments and everybody agreed how to do this and the fire departments got paid for doing this, you know, for their fuel and time and they were going to pump this out of, probably out of Boone Lake. And, you know, we started to look at utilities, but I think it'd be better to do it out of Boone Lake and because, you know, there's a lot of regulations with utilities and stuff like that, so I think we can move on with that. We can, you know, fire trucks, they've got pumps, they can back to a place, usually a loading ramp or, or the load down the load boats where they can back down that concrete ramp to the lake, pump it out, they'll go dump it, and most of them's got a big valve on the back of the truck and they know it and those trucks are about 2500 gallons, so they'll, you know, once they open that up, it goes up pretty quick and then they just, you know, go get another one. And all our, when we did it before, about every one of our fire departments did this, did this, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, we didn't use all the money that we had put and of course it come back to the, you know, general fund. And, but anyway, it's a good thing for our farmers because, you know, it takes, it takes a lot of time to haul water when you're doing it in small quantity, you've got several cattle or goats or whatever. It takes a lot of time to do it. And otherwise, a lot of the people, if they didn't have it, they'd just have to sell their livestock and, you know, then have to buy back at a later time or something. So, I think this is a good thing for our farmers and wants to provide us the food that we put on our table every three times a day, so, you know, I think it's, I think the taxpayer would be agree with us that way and help us.
Thank you, Commissioner King. Commissioner Vanover, you're recognized.
I'd just like to add real quick that not only is this a great service for our farmers, agriculture's the number one industry in the state of Tennessee, so it's a great program for our farmers to try and get through this drought, but also speaking with Bloomingdale Volunteer Fire Department, they were anxious to get on board for doing this because it gives them a chance to do some training. Said they had guys who had just first day on the job, they needed to learn to drive a fire truck somewhere somehow, and need to learn how to hook a hose up and how to run a pump, so it's also a good training exercise. They often go and test their pumps at the lake anyway, so they say they're, they make trips out there pretty frequently just to check their, perhaps, machinery, so it'd be easy for them to go in and fill up and haul the load back somewhere and provide it to a farmer, so hopefully everyone can support this.
Thank you, Zane. Commissioner Locke, you're recognized.
If you add the S's on the end of the department.
Okay.
And not just Sullivan County Fire Department.
I would like to touch base on that, what you just said. A lot of fire departments has already responded today and said they were 100% on board, so.
Yeah, just change that for the record.
Okay. A lot of them is, just like Commissioner Vanover said, they're kind of tickled to do this and I didn't, and I do want to touch base on the one where as our appropriation of $25,000 is requested by providing from the general fund to assist in appropriating a donation of $125 for each water load delivery that they make. So, it's going to help them with fuel and some expense and it's also going to be sufficient for the farmers to get them back with.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Yeah, it's not, so, Commissioner King, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a tidbit of information, it has something to do with this, but I got a call today from a firefighter and I hung some man in troublesome hole at one time and he called me and he said that somebody set fire to that land up there in Thorson. They set three different places and then they, somewhere, I don't know exactly, somewhere close to 421 and there was another, but anyway, there was five fires that were saved and, you know, all of the volunteer fire departments, Division of Forestry, Forest Service, all of them are on, trying to get it out of there and spread it too far. Anyway, that's, that's what we're having to go through is, you know, in these dry times and it's like you're setting fires for some reason.
That time of year. Commissioner Iverson.
Yes, sir. I just want to make sure that Commissioner Glover looks at it. I think you probably need to add one line on that very first, now therefore we have resolved on the last line, because what you said and what it said on here might be a little differently for each water delivery, because right now saying $125 is kind of lets you believe it's stolen. I know what you're meaning, but, and then S on that department's before and then each between four and one.
Okay. That, that, Madam Chair, you get that, sponsor, you can accept. Any other discussion on this? Board seems clear, so when the board opens, capture vote on item number thirteen. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Chair, take vote.
Twenty-one yes, three assent.
I received necessary majority out of number thirteen is adopted. Added on the item number fourteen onto the agenda, Commissioner Akers, its sponsor was co-sponsor Calvin, John, King, Crosswhite, Gardner, and Pierce. We will, I guess we're clear. Well, I, I, my thing still has thirteen just ahead. I'm sorry? We'll have fourteen on the board in just a minute. Commissioner Calvin, would you, would you, Commissioner Gardner, does that speak right now? Commissioner Gardner?
I'd be happy to do this on behalf of Commissioner Ackert if you wish, or if Commissioner Calvin wants to do it.
Either one of you could explain a bit.
I didn't know you said recognition. Oh, I'm sorry.
I've got your microphone also. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number fourteen comes to us with a positive recommendation from the Budget Committee we had yesterday, and it's to amend the Sullivan County General Fund for the fiscal year to reflect the contracted services. And Mr. Candy said he'd like to answer some questions as far as the more specific breakdowns of the proposed spending. This is a simple amendment to a grant, so if Mr. Candy would like to tell us more about it in more, more detail, that's fine too.
We'll, 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 we have to hear it. Michael?
And I'll, and I'll move, I'll move waiver of rules on this.
Commissioner Gardner and others, I move waiver of rules for immediate introduction and adoption of item fourteen. If any of you were recessed or you're recognized.
Okay, as you guys know, this is the SRO grant that we got, which is $75,000, an officer for each school, one officer per school, so we have 15 officers going to get paid through this grant for $75,000 of salaries and benefits. A lot of our officers don't make $75,000 with salaries and benefits, so the difference is going to be able to be used for equipment, for contracted services, training for these officers. To do that, we send it back to the state, so we definitely don't want to do that, so our door is asking to recognize this $127,000 to be used for those other projects. You guys got any questions?
Anybody have a question? Sure. There you go. You're recognized. Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. Could you just address for us how the other three SROs are going to be paid?
They will be paid the way they've always been paid, which will be a split between the county and schools, so we'll continue to request the schools to pay their 50%, and they will pay our 50%.
And will they be included in this training?
Yeah, absolutely. They're a part of the people getting trained, they want, to be fair, actually, let me correct my statement, we cannot pay for them, we can only pay for the 15 in each school. So those three, unfortunately, if they're not in the grant, we cannot pay for them through the grant, but if they need training, we'll take it from our other budget. We're not going to leave these guys out to dry by any means, so we just pick the highest paid out of the 15. Obviously, Westridge has more than one, so we could, we only pick the highest out of that school. The other three are not forgotten by any means.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from Michael? Thank you for your attention. Michael, looks like you did a good job explaining, thank you.
Thank you, Yossi.
Sponsor renews the motion, immediate introduction and adoption by item fourteen. Taken by numerous commissioners, and the board opens and you've got item fourteen up, so capture vote. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Chair, take vote.
Twenty-one yes, three assent.
I received necessary majority out of fourteen is adopted. I believe that clears, you know, resolution agenda for tonight and this is the time now where we're happy to recognize commissioners who have announcements of, if we recognize the water, for Commissioner Glover, you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. Back in September, we did all the assignments for, community assignments and so forth, and one of the kind of, kind of, we got to take action on this, as governed by the county just, the mayor has done and has the authority to appoint members to his budget committee. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the members that was appointed to the budget committee. The reason why we have to do this is it was in the Financial Act, Pride Act of Sullivan County, so this is something we've got to approve, and I would like to make a motion to approve member Mr. David Ackert, Commissioner Norwin Calton, Commissioner George Crosswhite, Commissioner Don Gardner, Commissioner Sam Jones, Commissioner Mark Iverson, Commissioner Archie Pearson, Commissioner Dwight King to the budget committee this time.
You've heard the motion, as they're saying. Gardner, pay. Any, any discussion? Let me say that personally, I appreciate your very minister of attention. It's an oversight on my part that this wasn't included in the entire list that you approved and ratified, so thank you for your motion. Any discussion? We don't have that on the board. Madam Chair, we don't, we don't, we'll do a roll call on that. I could do a voice vote, but we'll do a roll call since, since the budget committee does have certain authorities that need being acknowledged, so, Madam Chair, take the vote on Commissioner Glover's motion.
Calton?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Can I get you guys to speak up a little bit?
Yes.
I can barely hear you. Thanks. Crawford?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Crosswhite?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes.
Means?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Slagle?
Absent.
Stidham?
Absent.
Vanover?
Yes.
And Ward?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Twenty-one yes, three assent.
I received necessary majority, motion is adopted as of this time, and again, thank you, Commissioner Glover, that was my, purely my oversight, so appreciate you correcting it. Commissioner Vanover, you're recognized.
I just want to point out real quickly the reason for the shirts, everyone's wearing tonight to the audience and people may be watching, we're not, just trying to look like Christmas, but this is to point out that this is No Trash November, this is a program that's being run through our solid waste and our director, Mark Torrance, here, just to remind people that not to litter and instead of littering, it'd be best to recycle, so you'll hear more about that in the future, but just wanted to point out the reason for the shirts and the different dress and that, so that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
Mark Taylor. Mark Taylor.
Anybody else got an announcement for the commission? Seeing none, I want to wish each of you a safe and happy holiday season, starting off Thanksgiving, and be careful with your football team, don't forget ESPN, but thank you all for your progress, the chair sometime, I appreciate your support. I will try to respond to you in a proper manner. Motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
Means, although folks say aye, no, adjourn.
Hey, if I could, I'd like to get y'all's picture.